Okay, so I will go to a roll call of members. Please indicate that you are here by saying aye. Phil.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
And we don't have Mike Ahern. Okay, John.
Aye.
Carl.
Aye.
And no Mark tonight, and we have Michael Bouchard.
Aye.
And Steve Whitman.
Aye.
And do we have Susan Wood?
Yes, aye.
Okay, awesome. Well, welcome to our two new alternates. So usually, well, I don't know if I can say usually because we haven't had a full board in, I think, since I've been chair, but we do now. So since our two new members, usually I will, well, from now on, I will invite you to be voting members if we are short some members. Since you are both new, I'm going to start by inviting Steve Whitman to be a voting member today. And then we're short Mike Ahern, so we can pull in one more of the alternates to vote as well. So either of you want to volunteer to be the voting member this evening? Okay.
I'll step up.
Awesome, thank you. And what we'll probably do, at least for the first couple meetings, is I'll probably pull on or pull in Steve as a voting member as needed, just because he does have experience. There's a learning curve and we'll do introductions later. So if you've got a vast amount of planning board experience, then we can decide what to do in that case. But feel free to ask questions, points of clarification. It's a lot of sort of learning by doing here. And even if you're not a voting, voting tonight, I encourage you to be a part of the conversation. So and for new members, you are not the only new member is, I think, half the board has been on the board, has been here for less than a year. So we're a lot of, a lot of new folks. Okay, next up, and we're going to review the minutes from our meeting on February 18. Any corrections, clear points of clarification, anything needed in the minutes? I just saw a couple of things that aren't really substantial, but in the first public hearing, first paragraph under number seven, it repeats the vote twice. As far as the vote to accept the application is complete. So I think, I think one of those votes needs to get struck, get removed from that, so.
Okay.
And then on page three, in the first sentence at the top underneath the results of the previous vote, it says all in favor except Ahern, and I think it needs to be E X C E F T, C E P T. Just to make sure that, I'm sure people can assume that that's what it meant, but just to be clear. Other comments on the minutes? A motion to perhaps approve the minutes as amended?
I will move that we approve the minutes as amended.
All second.
All right, hang on one second, I've got a all sorts of technical issues. All right, so I will, we have a motion and a second, I will read the roll. Phil.
Aye.
Mary Ann. John.
Aye.
Carl.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Mike, Michael?
Aye.
Is it Mike or Michael? Sorry. Either. Okay, we got two of you now on the board. And sorry, what did, did you abstain or did you say, I mean, I guess you should, I'm saying you should probably abstain since you weren't here. I didn't hear what you said, so.
I said aye.
Okay, I would suggest abstaining just since you weren't here for the, for the last meeting unless, yeah, that would. And I should have prepped you with that, so apologies. And then final on the roll is me, and I say aye to approve the minutes. So minutes are approved as amended. Next up, we have public comments, not related to an application or anything else on the agenda. I think everyone here is either for a specific item on the agenda or is a member of the board. So we'll move on to communications received by the board. It looks like we have another cell tower notification. For our new members, I think it's, is it, I always ask this, it's a, I think it's a 40 mile radius. So anytime there's a cell tower proposed in a town that's within, or that's proposed within a 40 mile radius, we get a notification. It's very interesting to me how these vary from town to town, so the notifications at least, so. All right, any comments about the cell tower notification?
A little too late for us to act on it, but I'm happy to see more coverage in our rural state, honestly.
There's actually been a, I don't know if I'd say flurry, but definitely we've seen a number of more cell tower notifications recently.
Yes, there was one in Holderness, one in Kempton. Trying to remember what else we've seen.
Okay, so moving on, we also received a letter about Fatherland Trust applications for subdivision and site plan review. We're not quite at the part of the agenda where we're going to discuss the subdivision, which is a little bit later on, but everyone is able to receive and see those, those two communications. There's two, yeah. Right, we're good with that? Breasing through the agenda. Reports of committees. I don't, let me guess, is we don't have reports unless Mary Ann has anything to report from the select board. Sorry, totally put you on the spot, Mary Ann, but.
Yeah, I know, certainly just lots of, lots of talk about town hall. I mean, town voting, what's going on with that? And a lot of that going on right now. Voting's on Tuesday, I'm sure we'll see everybody there. We also went through the warrant articles the other day, not during the select board.
You're muted now, Mary Ann.
So we went through the Oh, it keeps happening. There we go. And about 20 people joined the meeting. They're now allowed to email or mail or calling questions. And then on Saturday, we'll have another Zoom meetings, going through the warrants again and answering any questions.
Great, thank you.
And has there been any activity with the Economic Development or Main Street Committee?
No, there has not been. Oh, June.
Go ahead, June.
Now I have to remember to unmute. Yeah, the, the Economic Development Committee is really falling to me to do, and I have had some conversations, and I was going to mention this a little bit later on, with some individuals that have been part of that committee, I mean, kind of getting some advice and thoughts and things. So we, I'm trying to kind of gather a little bit before we launch the committee, so it's a little bit more focused and to have a, I need a little bit of more time to have a little bit more background to see what's been done and come up with like some recommendations of where to go and work with, with the group. So while the committee may not be officially meeting, I don't want you to think that there isn't sort of behind the scenes, some things going on. We'll get there for a meeting soon, so.
Sorry, June, I should have deferred to you.
I appreciate the update either way. I was just curious if anything was happening on that front. So thanks for the updating.
And I don't think we've got anybody else sitting on other committees or boards in town, but I will remind everyone that our bylaws and the State Planner's Handbook suggest and encourages planning board members to, to sit on other town boards. And we have in the past had people on the planning board, also on the Conservation Commission zoning board. So not to diminish the service you are already doing for your town, but if you are looking to do more, it's definitely helpful to have those, to share members with, with other boards.
I do have a question regarding that, and maybe, I don't know if June has experience with this or not, but does the, does the prohibition of more than one member serving on other municipal boards extend to school boards? Or is it strictly to town boards?
Um, I can check on that to be sure. I believe it's other land use boards. So like, they can't have the whole zoning board be also the planning board.
Right.
You know, but, and maybe it's same with the Conservation Commission. So I think it's tied more to land use, but we could certainly have one person on the school board and planning board, and that would be great, especially when you think about educational needs and budgeting and things, so.
We do have that. Any update from, from the school board, Phil?
The only update from the school board that would affect anybody is that the PES did decide to do a remote learning day on the ninth to facilitate access to the, to the building for voting.
Right. All right, moving on to new business. As I said at the beginning, this is the first time in my, I don't even know, I don't know how many years this chair, three years maybe, four as chair, where we've had a full board. So I just want to welcome our two new alternates. And thought this would be a good opportunity to have everybody introduce themselves, a little bit about their background, where they're from. So yeah, I will start. Hi, everyone. Rebecca Hanson. I live on Wentworth Street. I work for the Newfoundland Lake Region Association. And we work to protect the Newfoundland watershed. I grew up not in Plymouth, but just a couple miles away from downtown in Holderness. My parents still live just, just over the river. So I grew up here, moved away for a bunch of years and got called back home and have been back here since about 2010, on the planning board since 2014. And chair, I think, since maybe 20, maybe 2017, I'm not totally sure. It's been a blur, wonderful blur. All right. I'll guess I'll just call on people since I think we're all seeing everybody in different order. Mary Ann, do you want to go next?
No, but I will. So born in Massachusetts, don't hold that against me. My family and I moved up here nine years ago, 2012. My wife works at PSU. I own Eminem Scoop's Ice Cream Shop down on Main Street. I also sit on the select board, so I'm, I'm kind of lucky. I get to sit on both the planning board and the select board, so lots of in the know stuff, which is great. About it.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Steve.
Steve Whitman. I live on Parker Street, and I have a business here in town that does planning consulting and ecological design work in New Hampshire and in other states. And I teach at Plymouth State as a hobby. So I teach about a class a semester. And I've been on the planning board for longer than I can remember as an alternate, because I do a lot of night meetings. So I'm always happy to be here, and I really appreciate everyone's time with the planning board. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Phil?
Yep, so Phil Amro, I live on Hilltop, which is the very west end of Pleasant Street, where it loops around and drops down to Maple. It's, it's like the southwest corner of the downtown area, which it's, I kind of like it. It's quiet over here. We can, we can actually barely see our neighbors, and we can walk to, walk to Main Street. So it's both rural and close to downtown, so we really like it. I work at the Electric Cooperative with administering energy efficiency programs. And I've only, I've only been on the Plymouth Planning Board for about a year, but I do have experience. I was on the Town of Bradford Planning Board for about 10 years and served as chair for maybe six of that. So I've been, I'm somewhat familiar with planning, but you know, towns have different zoning ordinances. And I'm, to be honest, I'm still getting up to speed on Plymouth zoning ordinances and site plan regulations and subdivision regulations, because no two towns have the same. And you know, that's, there's always a little bit of a learning curve there. So that's about, that's enough about me. Thanks.
Um, John.
Hi there, John. I actually grew up in New York, as we call it there, Long Island. And at this point, I live just a few houses down from Rebecca on Wentworth Street. And I teach at PSU, teaching geography, political science. My background is kind of strange. I have a degree from a school of architecture and planning, but yet I like learned how to like study culture and the arts there. And then I'm interdisciplinary, I suppose is the word. I like to bring a lot of stuff together and I guess that's about enough, yeah.
Carl.
Yes, my name is Carl Evans. I live on Cummings Hill Road. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and spent most of my life practicing chiropractic in the Cleveland, Ohio area. And several years ago, retired and moved here with my wife, who then came out of retirement, and is now deputy town clerk for Plymouth. And I have no experience whatsoever in planning, but I'm finding it fascinating and enjoying learning about all the aspects of it.
Thanks, Carl. Susan?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Susan Wood, and I live on New Hebron Road in Plymouth. My daughter and I own and operate an equine facility here. We also own a construction company and a gravel pit, which we operate. And I've been here all my life, 60 years, and farming on the same property. I've been in the same house all my life. And this is my first time being on a board, a town board, and I look forward to it, and thank you.
Thanks. Mike.
Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Bouchard, and I'm up here at Tenny Mountain. I'm one of the senior partners and owner of record of this property. I was actually born at Chelsea Naval Hospital down in Massachusetts, grew up on the North Shore. After my years at MIT, I spent my whole career as a government scientist specializing in energy, communications and weapon systems. Moved up here about six years ago, seven years ago, to take on this project up here in Plymouth, up at Tenny, get the ski area back going and try to create some jobs, businesses up here, taking advantage of the opportunity zone. Sat in many publicly traded boards, both here in the US and international. Never sat on a planning board, so this is all new to me. And I have to learn a lot, obviously, being a developer here. I need to know what's going on, obviously. And that's why I'm here, to gain a lot of experience and hopefully some of my outside the box experiences will help, help the town.
If I may say, welcome from a fellow MIT person.
Awesome. June, did you want to do a quick introduction of yourself as well?
Yeah, I think I just did this a few weeks ago. So I'm June H. Monroe, and I'm the Planning and Development Director for the Town of Plymouth. And I started really on, beginning of the year, beginning of January, late December, early January. But I, prior to that, I was, been at Plymouth State University for about almost 16 years and teaching some planning classes and land conservation courses and a couple other things I was involved with there. But before that, I actually was the town community planner in Plymouth. So I discovered, a couple of years ago, I started really kind of thinking about how I was missing doing the work. And when I'm teaching it, I was talking about it a lot, but I kind of wanted to start doing it again and saw some, some great chances of, you know, moving some things along here in Plymouth. So I came back, starting in January, and back in my old office, finding files that I had from, I don't know, 20 years ago. So that's been a little, a fun adventure. And so I know the town pretty well and know a lot of people in town, but not everybody. So we, we will all get together, find the new ways for the board to work altogether, so.
Awesome. Well, I think just, especially for new planning board members, both the two alternates that joined us today and other new folks, June's got a wealth of experience in planning and teaching about planning. So I think we're, especially with such a new board, we're really fortunate to have somebody who's, who's done quite a bit of study on, on planning boards and the education of planning boards. So so I thought we'd talk a little bit about, or put June's experience to work and talk about, about the application process. I'll just give a quick little intro here to sort of my, my philosophy on the planning board. I feel like we've got kind of two sort of divergent tasks. And one of them, and the one that tends to take up a lot of our, our, our brain power and our energy is application review. So we have our public hearings on the third Thursday of every month. We're reviewing applications that come before the planning board. That's more reactive planning. I think our real and true planning work happens on the first Thursday of the month, when, during our work sessions, when we are taking what we learned from our application review and what we know about the town, what we've learned in our master planning process. And in thinking about what, how our master plan, how our land use regulations, how they work for the Town of Plymouth today, and how they're going to work for the Town of Plymouth into the future as well. So our role is to not just review applications, but also to be forward thinking and make sure we have the, the regulatory infrastructure to, to support Plymouth of the future, based on the visions that we've all established through our master planning process. So I think, June, you've got some stuff prepared to talk about the application process and how that works. And you're good to walk us through that?
Sure. So I actually made a PowerPoint, I guess that's the teacher part, I'm not giving up entirely. So let me, I will go to that in a second, but I, and I wanted to keep this short. I can, we can dig deeper into topics at any time if you guys have questions. What I'm focusing on is some issues that came about at our last meeting two weeks ago around sort of the planning, the application process, and also sort of a little bit about what happens behind the scenes in the office. Because I realized, I guess, in our discussions, I was assuming a few things about a development sort of review and post-planning board decision processes that I know have been used many times in the past. And certainly have, as a planner, recommend that they're used, but, and I was not, because I haven't been in, you know, in this position for too long, I guess I was assuming that what had been happening even as recently as, you know, five, six years ago, four years ago, was still something that this board was familiar with. And Rebecca's, you know, and I've chatted a bit, but it's, I, I want to make sure that there's an understanding of how processes can happen, which might be a little bit different than what's been going on the last couple of years. So we're just going to review through that. But Rebecca's right, I mean, there are these sort of overarching things that planning boards are in charge of, which is master planning. So the town's master plan was really most recently revised 2018, and that's available on the town's website. If anybody doesn't have a hard copy and wants one, let me know. I'll print one, get one to you, because it is sometimes easier to have, have in your hands. And from that sort of vision and goals and direction for the town is really where the regulations come, follow from that. So we have subdivision regulations, site plan review regulations and a zoning ordinance. So the planning board deals with subdivisions and site plans, and they're similar in regulations, but the subdivisions about dividing pieces of part, land into smaller pieces. And then site plans really is about what you do with those sites for multifamily and commercial developments, not for single family or two-family housing. That's kind of an overview, but what I wanted to share in my PowerPoint here, so let me go to that. And hold on. Okay, whoops. It's not moving ahead, it's stuck. There we go. Uh-oh. Let me stop the share here, so, sorry about that. Um, I'm gonna all right, PowerPoint just crashed on me, so. That's weird. I apologize. But what I was going to talk about was, and you know, applications, whether subdivision or site plan, they're governed by a set of state laws that really, there's a key one that governs board's procedure with, with plans. So the process is very similar in sort of the steps that the board needs to take. And I think this board is aware of that, and for the most part, and has been doing a good job. So I'm not going to spend too long on those aspects, but it's starting to, trying to restart here. So the first being that I, my sense is that this board so far in the last couple of years hasn't used a lot. There's sort of two preliminary ways to go about working with an applicant, somebody that might be interested in, you know, doing some type of development. And they want some input on what to do and what the planning board might be thinking about in terms of, do they, how do they feel about it? So there's a process called preliminary conceptual consultation, where somebody might come in and just say, hey, I've got this piece of land, this is something I want to do, and sketch out something, usually very conceptual. And those conversations with the board are non-binding. Usually what the applicant is asking for at that time is some guidance and interpretation of regulations. And then looking at this is just really, I'm really apologize, I haven't.
June, I've got it, the, the version you sent to me earlier, I'm happy to pop that up on the screen if that helps.
Yeah, I ended up making a bunch of changes.
Okay. Yeah.
So I'm going to try one other.
Your narrative is covering nicely while you're trying to get it up and running.
Thinking, I might look at some notes here. So the I have this on the hard drive, and it's trying to go to the network, that's the problem on my computer here, I think. Get it there. That should work. Because it can't read it. Well, this might not, my big idea might not work. It's there. I don't know why it's not opening. Um, so.
Do you want me to share my?
Yeah, why don't we go to yours? I'll have, I have to do that, because this is I just had a couple other things on, on the slides.
Can you allow me to, if you, I am not allowed to share my screen?
That's right. Hold on a second, I gotta get back to, okay, you can, should be able to do it. I had a few other things on there, I think they're, I can ad lib here, do things on the fly all the time. So, all right, thank you, Rebecca. So let's just start with that slide in the interest of time. You'll probably have to, I'll have to do the old next slide thing. So this is sort of a flow chart of when somebody has a preliminary consultation. Again, they're looking usually for clarification about what can I do? Sometimes I'm trying to understand just the regulations and what the, what would work best as they try to design a development for their property. The key thing about this is that it's non-binding, and because it's just sort of conceptual with no real engineering drawings or, you know, just rough sketch, we also do not have to notify the public. So the next sort of level, but this, this doesn't always happen, because sometimes developers don't want you to know what's going on because of investments or secrecy. You know, they don't want the neighbors to always know until they're a little bit more ready to go. Sometimes it can impact the price of a parcel they might be looking at, so this doesn't always happen. The other place this sometimes happens is in the office. We get a lot of phone calls. What's the zoning? Could I do this? What are the setbacks? And, you know, when, when town halls open again, you know, I'm sure we, you know, from past experience, a lot of times people will come in with a, you know, a, just a sheet of paper and a rough sketch. So sometimes this kind of stuff happens with myself and Juliet Harvey Bulia, who's not attending the meeting tonight, she couldn't come. So just know that there, there often are sort of clarifications to the regulations that staff does help with the state stage, so you might not always see this. So the next one is design review, if you can just go to the next slide. So the next one is design review. If you can just go to the next slide. And that is a little bit more of a formal process. And sometimes that means the application is a little bit more refined. And at this stage, because it has more detail, we do have to notify the public and allow butters the chance to come in and listen to it, but we don't have to have a public hearing for it. It's again more just talking about design, letting on the the neighbors and the in the community start to see what's going on. And again, any discussions are non-binding. So doesn't mean that if the board says, yes, we want that building over there, it has to go there. So there's always opportunities to change after this. And then the next phase, the next sort of level is what we are more used to seeing. If you go to the next slide was when we have actual subdivision or site plan, and there's a couple of key steps to this. That second blue bar there is really about well, so actually basically, let me start at the beginning here. The applicant submits the application for either subdivision or site plan review. They do that in town hall. We have a deadline of it's about I think it's about three weeks, 20 days or so before the planning board meeting because we need time to go through the application and prepare the butter notices and get those mailed out and they go out by certified mail. So there's a a bit of work in the office that happens to get all that done because we by law have to send out those notices 10 days prior to the public meeting. So if you do them, if you look at a calendar, you know, the third Thursday when this board's meeting, we have to have 10 days gotten before about the those notices out. And then at the meeting, the first step for you guys to really do, and we are trying to get information to you by the Friday before the Thursday planning word meeting. So you have a few days to look it over. You have time to call if you have questions of the staff, if you want hard copies, you know, whatever you need to better understand, to try to give you some time, you know, make sure you have some time to put into getting kind of doing your homework before the meeting. So then at the meeting, there your job is to first look and see if the application is complete. And then that means going through the regulations and the checklist that we have to sort of determine if all the information is there. Sometimes application applicants will ask for waivers because of the scale or the scope or whatever reasons, there's many times they will ask for waivers and they should be doing that in writing and giving an explanation as why. And sometimes we have to coach them a little bit. Or it's sometimes fairly obvious to. So then you make that decision. It's either complete or not complete. If it's not complete, you have to in your decision as a board, you have to state why. So it's missing. You know, this and that in the application and the staff reports that we do are are designed to try to help help you with the that determination of completeness and what might be missing and make a recommendation of yes, it's ready to be accepted as complete. But you know, it is the planning board's decision. It's not the staff's. So then once it's complete, then you have to begin formal consideration. So this is where it's a little bit, it's kind of up to you guys and what you want to do and traditionally it's usually enough discussion in that in that phase of trying to accept the application that you usually there's a presentation by the applicant. So you have a fair amount of information. So often that sort of consideration launches into a bit about the you know, really what's there and then having a public hearing. So this is where there's different ways to go. It's been the practice of the Plymouth Planning Board. I know back, you know, in 2018 years ago, when I was in the planner position before, we really did try to shorten the time for applicants. So often what that's why you see an application that's recommended to be complete, the board accepts it, and then the public hearing is held that first night of that same planning board meeting. You don't have to do that. We can many communities and the normal sort of old process would be you accept the you accept the application one night. And then the next couple of weeks, you send out the notices and then a month later, you actually have the public hearing. That, you know, is something to consider for big applications. I think at times it does sometimes give a little bit more opportunity for people to think about and understand and learn about the application. You know, you can have some discussion about it. You can decide, hey, we need a traffic study or a drainage study or something before having the public hearing. But you know, applicants do like to have that hearing scheduled in that first meeting because it does save them some time. So try to meet that has been in the practice in the past to want to you know, get get public input and get information in that first meeting. And I think that is a good practice, but just have to remember you know, what's going on with that. So then then you can, you know, continue the public, you can have the public hearing like in March and then continue it on till April. And that's a practice that you've been doing for a while appropriately. You just have to make sure people know when they are at the meeting, that the meeting, that the continuation, the the hearing will continue on to the next month. But by law, you have 65 days to make a decision if you can, which is really just a couple of months. And if you don't make the decision in that timeframe, you do have the chance to work with the applicant to get an extension. Oftentimes, it's it's pretty easy to usually to work it out because if you can't make a decision, it's because you're waiting for more information. And if the applicant says, no, I'm not going to agree to an extension, then you're kind of forced to deny the application because it's lacking. You know, they didn't follow up on getting additional pieces of or further studies that mean something that may have come up during the public hearing or something. So usually that 65 days is worked out. But
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, absolutely.
In in my experience, I think I I have seen applicants make the case that we should not have accepted an application if we didn't have the information required to have a hearing and hold make the decision. So I think that's something that we need to we need to be aware of when we're reviewing an application for completeness is that if we're going to request studies or further information, we may want to do that before accepting the application because once we hit that 65 day time limit, we're not obligated. We are obligated to make a decision.
Yeah, again, I, you know, the best advice I can give on that is to really make sure if there's enough information to start working. It's kind of like, is there enough information to start working with it? And usually additional information comes from more complex developments where there might be a big traffic impact or, you know, the in those situations, I think most times people know what they need and they're working on it like a wetlands permit or those kinds of elements too. So again, staff, we can help you with that and make some good guidance, but usually wanting special studies, additional studies is not a reason to not accept the application. Just so you're aware, it's it's more about is the information on the plat on the plan, is there enough? You know, did they show where the parking is? Do they show the building? Do they show the floodplain? Do they show the setbacks, that kind of basic stuff? And then from that you can build and think about the use of the site and what other kind of additional things you need to consider. Does that help Phil? Okay. So just keep in mind that if if an application is is happened to be denied, you do have to state reasons why and kind of point out what what's what that is. And then the process is they can either revise and submit or they can appeal the decision. But that doesn't, you know, usually there's ways to work it out. I would say in my experience that throughout this process, then there's a lot of negotiation that can happen and working things out. And that's not always a bad thing. And also in that decision, it's obviously approved. You can also conditionally approve or deny and most planning boards in New Hampshire offer conditional approvals for that's that's the general trend. So and that's perfectly acceptable. We just have to start being, you know, thoughtful about what those conditions are and being really clear with them and what timelines in particular. So this is where I, some of my thoughts had diverged a little bit from this this version, but this is fine. So Rebecca, why don't you go to the next slide? So I had these kind of things and some of these aspects happen during a different in different ways throughout the process, mainly being the the third blue line, the escrow agreement. So I wanted to, this is where I wanted to spend a little bit more time. So whenever there's a notice of decision that needs to list all the conditions of approval that, you know, gets drafted up, but from the notes in the meeting, the minutes, and then the planning board chair signs it. For complex developments, the, you know, the recommendation I'm going to give you is that consider doing a development agreement. We should always be considering what types of additional help we need as construction happens for a site. And that can be legal and that can be engineering or those are the primary areas sort of post decision. But escrow accounts also comes up during the review too. So we're going to, I'll explain what those are in a bit. And then also surety, which is usually in a bond or letter of credit. So I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then what kind of site inspections, compliance hearings as built plans do you want to have? So this is kind of that after the decision is made. This sometimes can take several years for a development for large subdivision with a new road, new utilities that kind of gets built bit by bit. And there's a lot that can happen that sometimes I think you know, it doesn't happen on a Thursday night. So we have to think about what are the resources of the town of Plymouth to can to ensure that any developments are happening in accordance with the approved plan and also in a way that protects the town and the town's resources. So we do not have a town engineer. We do not have a town attorney on staff. We contract that out. We have consultants that help us with that. So anytime we engage them, there's a, you know, hourly fee for it. So the traditional approach is to work with developers to make sure that they are paying for those costs of the town occurs. All right. So why don't you go to the next one? We'll see what the next slide is Rebecca. Oh, so conditions of approval. There's sort of two types. This isn't, I'm going to spend a lot of time on this, but there's precedent and subsequent. So basically conditions of precedent mean that really before getting final approval, they have to do some things. Okay. And then subsequent are things that usually get kind of, we try to, it's it's good practice to get them noted on the final map. And they might be part of that discussion and you know, kind of a little bit of an adjustment, say there's a a type of development that happens and in the course of approval, the it's decided because the the neighbors are concerned about impacts. The planning board says, okay, this can operate. You know, from sunrise to sunset or seven in the morning till seven at night, you put that on the plan. So it kind of sometimes can set some 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 standards or how something operates or maybe some some additional things like this stone wall must be preserved or something like that. So those are kind of things that go a little bit more lasting post development. All right. So sometimes you hear about that and you read resources about planning about the the two types of conditions. So under the next one. So development agreements, this is something that are our consulting attorney, who is from Donahue Tucker in Chandela. He's been working with the town a long time, excellent municipal attorney in terms of giving advice and years back, he advised that we start using development agreements. So these have probably since about 2002 or three. I don't know exactly. I tried to look into some files in the last couple of weeks to see when it really got started, but it was probably 2002 because we were seeing some bigger developments start to happen like Walmart, you know, at that kind of scale. And they're useful in any time when there's some real you know, when things are going to happen. And what it does is it sort of pulls out. While we have the conditions of approval, there's other factors that kind of mentioned and I I emailed to you a sample of the development agreement. So you can hopefully have seen kind of the statements in there and it really works to try to kind of set a set an agreement of how this will happen. Okay. And this is again, this is on the advice of the town's attorney. And we put additional, any of the conditions in there. And sometimes it takes out some of the language from either the site plan review regulations or the subdivision. It sort of says, hey, this this is how it's going to apply, you know, the timeline, we make some adjustments to to something like that. And that's you know, regulate week, somebody could get approval and then be working on the construction of this for two years. And in that time, you could change the regulations. So having a separate standalone agreement is good practice just for that purpose too, because if there's any changes in the regulations that might, you know, you'd have to have to kind of to go back. Well, what were the regulations three years ago when this was approved? Because now the current set of regulations don't show us the right thing. So that's another big reason. The other aspect about it is that when you grant approval or conditional approval, you're adding value to a piece of land. You're adding the potential for development. You're saying, yes, this development can occur. Doesn't mean it's happened yet. But it's giving value. And these agreements and the and the approvals you give, what we say is runs with the land that goes, it adds to the parcel. And that developer can can sell it tomorrow or next week or two years later. So you might not during the course of construction, a community might end up working with different people. If it's a big company, you might have a representative that is at the planning board and then leave the company and now you're dealing with somebody else. So again, those agreements kind of help standardize things for the town. Planners come and go, you know, standardized things in one place. It's easy to find for everybody to know what's going on. So when you have developments that are having larger scale things happen, this is the recommendation to try to consider using that. All right. The next slide. Yeah, good question.
Yeah, I had a quick question. So is there a kind of quantifiable or close to it way of defining which plans that would come before us would be subject to a development agreement and which would not? Or is it this kind of up to us? I mean, I'm just saying from the from the point of view of a developer and predictability, is there a way they go into the process and say, I'm probably going to get one of those or I'm probably not?
Um, and I think that's a place, that's a good, really good question. There's no, it's no either just easy way to say here's a threshold, yes, no. I think it really depends again on what's happening, what the amount of utilities, the amount of space, you know, the amount of the scale of it for our town. And and we behind the scenes in the office, part of, you know, big part of my job is to be reviewing these plans and kind of make that assessment because I can see after you make a decision, you know, say a conditional approval. I can see that this is going to take a couple of years to build out most likely, you know, and if it takes a year, it means it's going fast and furious, which has other concerns to it too sometimes. So I guess the best thing is to ask, you know, get some guidance from from the planner. If you know, if you can learn, you know, to hopefully trust my judgment on that a bit and think about that and is a is a good way to go. And we can, we can always talk about that, debate it and you know, developers will push back and say, this isn't needed. But again, it's it really is about fairness and clarity and and for and I can tell you that's the best way to go, having things clear. And and that is a great way using those development agreements helps do that. It's I can open the file and if you put it right in the top of the file, there it is. So I can see what needs to be done this year or next year, you know. So that's where it helps a lot.
I'm gonna just jump in for a second to kind of address John's question too, because a lot of the applications we see are change of use. And you know, differentiating between, you know, just thinking about past examples when the Republican headquarters kind of near peppercorn in the pizza place that's for sale now. When that went to a bubble tea place, that was a change of use, you know, just thinking about the scale at which we see our site plan, you know, all the way to market basket. There's a, there's a big scale in development. And yeah, so I think that obviously something like putting a bubble tea place in an existing structure with no structural change or any, there's no parking requirements, anything like that in the downtown area. That's a very different scale than, you know, a 40,000 square foot building.
Yeah. Um. Again, it's about, I think it really is about how many, how much just how much disturbance and construction is going to happen, whether it's a subdivision, a lot of subdivision, you know, we don't see them a lot in Plymouth, but you know, if you have new roads, you utilities, that kind of thing makes a big difference. So escrow agreements, these are set up in a couple of different times in that application process. So this is, I think I had an additional slide that I can't seem to call up. Kind of embarrassing, but um. So these funds are, sometimes people are familiar with escrow accounts because if you go to purchase a home, you know, you often in that you make an offer and then you put some money in escrow, which is then kind of helps cover some fees for, you know, that could occur. Those are held by a Realtor, but in the planning world, these are really funds that are held for a specific purpose related to application development. It's usually to hire and to you know, to review something that is beyond my, I'm not an engineer. And there's a lot of engineering, civil engineering work that happens in these applications, bigger ones. So we would want somebody to look at that. So we have our consulting engineer. So the process that happens with this or or our attorney to really look over some legal documents, if somebody's got a you know, some kind of clustered subdivision where there's going to be a homeowners association, we want to know what those agreements look like and have have a have a look at them and condominium documents is another great example. Easement is another one. Because those are legal documents and I'm not an attorney or engineer. So so the amount, how much do we collect? What we do, sometimes there's a per per you know, formula we can use and Plymouth did, and I think it's 2008, adopt a policy for reviewing plans, even in that stage, sometimes before you might even get them to review to accept them for completeness. For reviewing plans, even in that stage, sometimes before you might even get them to review to accept them for completeness, completeness. We can, in the office, the staff can review the plans. Send a copy to our engineer and say, hey, how much would it be for you to do the review and can you get it done before the next planning board meeting? And then we get that estimate, so then we tell the developer it's gonna be X amount of money. Please, we have a formal agreement, I've sent you a sample, again, this has been written up and approved by our attorney from years back and. He's checked these just recently, because I wanted to, you know, enough time had gone by, I wanted to make sure both the development agreement and the escrow agreement had a fresh look. And he said they they look great still, so with one couple of changes we made, but. So then you put it, you you have this agreement signed, the developer gives you a check and we have, by law, this is all, you know, set up in state statutes too. We have to hold it in an interest-bearing account, so we work with the town's finance director, we have separate accounts that those go in. And then we can, then we can give the engineer the approval to start doing the plan review, in this case, my example. And they do that, they send a report, you've seen some of those just last month, you know, one from for the Riverside Landing, that one was fairly short. Because the plans were in pretty good shape. And then we use the funds in the escrow account to pay that engineer when he sends the invoice, all right. So and if we don't spend all the money, we have to give it back and we have a timeline for that and we give back any interest that it accrues to, so the developer. That agreement, again, it allows them to understand that that process and we are very careful about it, they've been used for years, there's a whole list of. I found a whole drawer full of escrow accounts files and so. Does any, and then, so likewise, escrow accounts can also be used post-decision by the planning board. When construction starts, we typically. Will use a consulting engineer to come and review and watch what's going on, this is not day by day. Construction inspection, it's usually at some key milestones, you know, or periodically, maybe once a month, or it could be after. You know, again, in the development agreement, we would say the developer should notify after the first, you know, when the storm drains are put in. Contact us and then we'll have the engineer come out and look at them before they get buried, you know, and covered back up and that kind of thing. So sometimes it's by milestone or kind of key points in the development, you'd ask the engineer to take a look at. And the point of that is, you know, we see a a piece of paper with a plan, we wanna know that what gets put in the ground is actually. What what you were told was gonna be there, because it's kind of like, you know, when you build a house, you wanna make sure the architect's. Plans that the builder is actually is following it, so same idea, all right. So those escrow agreements post-planning board decision, it's the same process, we get an estimate for the amount of construction inspection and. Put the money in an account and work that way too, all right, any questions? On that. Okay.
It's not really a crucial question, but I'll just curious, in estimating the money for an escrow. You mentioned, you know, you estimate how much it's gonna cost, is that a an exact number or is there a kind of cushion for overruns? Like percentage wise built into that?
Yeah, no, that's an estimate and they usually are pretty good, I would say, unless there's lots of different changes or something. In the agreement, there's a statement that says. That if we, when we get to eighty percent of, you know, say, say we say estimate it's gonna be a thousand dollars, when we have spent eight hundred. We have to kind of take pause and notify that, you know, and work with the consultant and say, hey, how much more is this gonna take, cost? Actually, they they are supposed to let us know that, so so we aren't ever going over. That amount, so there's a safeguard in there. We can go back and ask for more, because anybody, hey, this is taking a few extra hours because the complexities or you made a bunch of changes. You know, so that's that's the other sort of step to it, all right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, I know you're new to being back here and this is. It's my understanding that we've used these in not that distant past, we just, it never really came. To the planning board that this kind of stuff was happening, was a lot of it was behind the scenes, in your. File exploration, when when was the last time we were using development agreements and escrow agreements?
Um, well, I can't say for sure for all developments, because. That the way our files are organized are, that's, it's not always, it's quite, it's it's by map and lot number, really, it's not chronological. But part of the research I've done to also, and I was gonna bring this up in two weeks and share some information I had after I've kind of finished it. But I did go, because we are concerned, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds about one. One development, but I did do the research on all the different phases for Riverside Landing, in part, I needed to learn more about what the sequence of events and what's happened. There, so the first subdivision was in September of two thousand twelve and there was. Yeah, this this kind of stuff, the development agreement was part of that. Condition of approval, escrow accounts, construction inspection, that kind of thing, so that's that, but I know we were using them back in like two thousand three, four. So they, I, and there's been a pretty steady progress of them throughout that time, but at Riverside Landing, they've gone up through. Officially, probably through through two thousand fifteen, but the last couple of phases, I don't think they, I think they may have been done, but not, I can't. The paperwork isn't as clear to me as to how that's happened. So, but pretty much all the steps of Riverside, the bank, the hotel, McDonald's. You know, filling for that first kind of phase all went through this and I've got records of what those numbers are, of what we collected and held in escrow, so.
That's, it's helpful to know, just, you know. We, I hadn't heard much of this at all, but knowing that even on my time in the board, it's been happening, but without it being. Something that was discussed at the board level, so.
And I do think that, you know, I don't wanna go on too much longer here, because this isn't, this isn't a class, but hopefully this is instructive and because I did sort of feel like I I assume that this. I I guess I had sort of seen in the files some elements of this without. Going through every single piece of paper because of time and, you know, the tediousness of it. So what I did not realize is that Market Basket and the gas station, the two most recent developments doesn't seem to have had. That sort of sense of the development agreement that I can find, but there was definitely some construction inspection done at Market Basket, so. So it has been done, it's just, and given the size of that, I was sort of just assuming, given I knew that it had been there for some other pieces, because I'd seen it, so. It's partly our record keeping and, you know, planners get busy and there's lots of stuff that happens. You're welcome to tour the office anytime, see the 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 amount of plans we have. If anybody wants like scrap paper for your kids or something or grandkids that, you know, that's great for drawing. We can provide rules of that usually. So, yeah, and the other big pieces, you know, we we have to keep really careful track of the invoices and we always give copies to the developer, because it's really their money, we're just, we're just kind of holding on to it for this purpose. But we we make sure that they understand, hey, here's a bill for a hundred dollars, here's the check we paid for a hundred dollars, that kind of thing, so they can trade track, so it's all very apparent, very. Apparent or transparent and, you know, this is allowed by law and this is the way you have to set it up with these non-interest-bearing accounts, so. You know, it creates work for staff, but it, I think the the purpose of it is to ensure that. These additional sort of higher-end costs are part of of these bigger developments and the philosophy is. The developer should pay for that and because it's site-specific and the town doesn't have the resources to just have an engineer on staff. You know, in the city of Concord, the city engineer probably does some of this work without the consultant aspect to it. You can actually hire a planner to do your plan review too and using an escrow account, you know, so. You know, some point, if we got really, really busy and we needed some more planning assistance, we could say, hey, we just, it's more than we can handle right now, we're gonna hire a. Another planner to cover it just because of capacity, so there's there's that kind of aspect to it. But we're not, we we, I don't foresee that happening, but. All right, what's the next slide, I don't know, what's the next one? Oh, yes, this is, yeah, this is the slide with the most text on it. Again, this came up, I just really wanted to go over what we call surety, it's usually in the form of a bond or a letter of credit. Developers tend to like letters of credit, because they cost less for them to get. And we cannot specify in our regulations that it has to be one or the other. So usually we kind of work that out, either one's acceptable by the town, so most of the time when you see letters of credit, those are issued by a bank. And the real, the real purpose behind it is to make sure that all improvements are constructed in or installed in accordance with the plans and then it gets done. So there's lots of horror stories from around the country about a developer starts building that subdivision, gets the road half-built. You know, opens the site up, cuts a bunch of trees, goes up a hillside, doesn't get all the drainage and stormwater in and erosion control. And then they go, you know, they walk away from it, they are losing money. Something happens, they fold, they just disappear, so the town's now got this messy, you know, scar in the landscape and. Depending on the site, when it's, you know, you wanna make sure that there's the ability to have somebody come in and close the site, so we. You know, bulldoze it around and cover it back up and loam and seed it or whatever, to do something to kind of protect the landscape. Protect the lot, protect the neighbors. And, you know. So so that's the real purpose of having some financial means for if, again, I don't think this has ever had to be happening, happen, but it's good practice. And it's certainly advisable and every, the Hampshire's planning handbook says to do that, so. You know, when, again, it's about the scale of the developments, when you're really seeing lots of construction, you wanna make sure that there's a way to secure the site if something bad happens. And what would happen is if we had to call on a bond or a letter of credit, is it allows us to. The town would then have the right to access money, that's the developers, and then we would hire a contractor to. Get in there and do whatever it needed to be done to kind of repair the site and do some, you know, kind of contour it and seed it or something. So the cost for those, again, we use our engine, consulting engineer to give us and work with the engineer of the applicant to say, hey, what do you, what's the cost estimate to do this work? And then if it's a hundred thousand dollars, then they give us a letter of credit for that much or whatever, you know, to to it's it's for, it's not for the cost of the full development, it's the cost to go in and repair it. That's what it would be for. So again, we have those kinds of documents from banks in the file, they do usually, banks give them for a year, so there's some, you know. Staff time to make sure that we keep them up to date on our end. But I can tell you right now, there's, you know, there's. You know, a a big development can take, you know, ten years to finish up in variety of ways, so you wanna keep these things out there. To make sure that they get completed, so it's the best practice for the town, so. Questions about that?
June, I have a question, Mike Bushad?
Yes.
When you're, when you're talking about this, as you know, I'm up here at Tenny and it's all private property, when you refer to these bonds and letters of credits and to come in and catch up some things. Are we talking about? What, when, when a developer comes in and he's on private property, he's putting his own roads in, are we talking about DOT approval, the roads that the town's gonna pick up services on? Like up here at Tenny, I'm sure you know, all the roads are not managed, taken care of by the town and we have a couple of washed-out bridges and so on that look awful. There's no letters of credits or bonds put up. So when you're talking about referring to these letters of credits and bonds for development on private property. I I is is am I incorrect in understanding that we would still go through a bonding process? Or the development?
Well, any development, it would come to the town on private property, so it would be a, you know, say you have a. Like in the case when Walmart was built, it's, I forget how many acres, you know, but it was a wooded hill slope, and so we had a plan to. Clear the site, great, you know, cut and fill, build a big retaining wall, level the site, put in all kinds of stormwater. You know, drinking water, wastewater lines, all that kind of stuff, so it went from a wooded hill slope to a Walmart. So in that process is what we're talking about when it's new development, in the case of what you're talking about in Tenny, it's old and it's there. So it's not about going in to finish up something or change something that maybe is just. You know.
There can be maintenance bonds, but it's unlikely that that would, there would have been a maintenance bond for that property.
Right, you know, that's such a, it's an older development, probably before we had these good practices in place, so. You know, there is a case in town right now where there's a road that has, you know, it's a newer subdivision, it's getting pretty well built out. The developer still owns the road, the town does not, so they maintain it. So, and I don't think we, I think the bond for it has run out, but most all the work's been done and now there's, you know, there's some problems emerging just because of the slope and. Some some time that's gone by and the road, you know, roads deteriorate in our climate, so. That's not, it's not about maintaining it, it's about making sure. Our our goal is to make sure that there's, like, that the the site gets protected, you know, that there's some way of kind of. You know, grading it back out, leveling it out, controlling it so that the the mud in the hillside doesn't fall down into the neighbors. Into a river, you know, that kind of thing, or if it means finishing building out the last bit of the road and finishing up the utilities. Because there have been some lots sold and part of the development, now every case is different, but. It is tied to a new development that it would be being proposed to the boards' process.
June, one of the, one of the places I can recall surety bonds being a big, kind of an important factor is is reviewing gravel pit operations, because usually they require a closure plan. And it would not be uncommon for someone to walk away from their closure plan, so if there, if there, you know, excessively steep slopes that are a hazard to the public or. You know, if if there are erosion, you know, sedimentation control issues that haven't been addressed. That, you know, that surety bond would allow that site to be closed adequately and seeded so that, you know. It eliminates that risk to the public in the future.
Right, and that's, that's a good example, because those can go on for years, you know, as they keep removing gravel and there's different phases usually in pits and that kind of thing. The other thing about surety is that they can get reduced, you know, over, after two years, if they've gotten this and that done, then you can reduce that line of credit or the, reduce the bond by half or whatever that amount is, so it's always, again, it's a process. And in my experience, going through that process, the best thing to do is to be clear and fair and open and and work it out and, you know. When it's not clear is when things tend to be a problem in my, my, so just kind of keep that in mind and having these tools. Our, you know, our job, the planning board and the plant, the planner's job is to. You know, do the best for the town of Plymouth, and so that's why we we do these things here, and that, doing the best is about both protecting. The resources, protecting the site, protecting the neighbors, protecting the neighborhood. As well as the financial side, because, you know, we we don't have a budget in the planning line for, you know. To to just hire an engineer whenever we want, that's, you know, we, once a year when the town adopts a budget, you'll see there's not, there's not much in there for. For this kind of, there's nothing in there for this kind of thing, I mean, the select, selectmen's office has some money for legal and things that we can tap into, but we're, we have to be careful with it. You can start to eat up a money, you know, these things pretty quick, so you tie that to the. To part of being that, part of that development where where it belongs, so it's a little bit added cost to the developer, but. Again, usually in the scope of a. Very large, big investment by a developer. You know, a couple thousand dollars for construction inspection isn't a huge percentage of their overall budget, so. Keep that in mind too.
But I asked you a quick question. It's, it's a procedural question, has, it's, I I think the. Question is more ethical in some ways than legal necessarily, and it relates to Riverside, and I was trying to ask somebody these questions last time, my my internet kept dying last, last meeting. So we were looking at an application and it could come up with another one too probably. Where the application came before us, it got approved previously and. Then a very similar one came back again. And we were being asked if we wanted to. Add extra things to that, which I think are great ideas and they should be in place. But when it had already been a similar one approved previously, I'm I'm just wondering, I mean, legally, I think we can do this. But I'm I'm thinking about the expectation on the other side and consistency. And. I mean, obviously it's a new application, but it's one related to a previous one that had already been approved. I mean, if you were my questions going here, it has to do with. Like, this is why, like, I I was like reticent to actually push forward, I would say if if we had never been before us, absolutely, yes. But then because it was already kind of in process and then re, you know, yeah.
So I guess, you know, I'm trying to think of a good way to sort of explain it, but you you know, they had an application, it was approved, but then. That approval expired because a year went by, so that, that's kind of like done, you know. And yes, they can come back with, they could have come back with the exact same application, or in this case, it was a very, it was enough difference, so it is a new application, all right?
Yeah, legally, of course, we can do this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay.
Um, because it's a new application and even if it was a revision, it's kind of re, relooking at it. Um, because of the substantial change, if even if, say they had gotten the wetlands permit, um, and come in with the recontoured pad. That was a substantial enough change to warrant a new public hearing and a new look at it. And then you can also say, hey, we went to a workshop at Office of Strategic Initiatives on, on this stuff. We just learned this, we can, you can do that. You know, it's allowed by law. Um, you know, you can't just go back afterwards, um, if something started and said, hey, we need you to do this. So. You know, so again, it's, it's. You know, I, I'll try to help steer you along in that way, but I guess I also thought, I was surprised to find that you hadn't done that previously too. So, yeah, Rebecca.
I just was going to try and keep us from getting too much down into Riverside Landing specific stuff, um, just because I think, um. Um, yeah, I think that's probably best for the next meeting. We have them there and we can sort of discuss it as a board, um. After we sort of let all this stuff absorb. So.
Yeah. Good. Thank you for that reminder. So I think, um, that was sort of what I wanted to highlight for, about all of this and that. Um, but good questions, good discussion about it. So.
All right. Um, thanks, June. I think that was really helpful. I know I learned a lot. Um, so, um, this is, this is good. Um. Next up on the agenda, updates from the Planning and Development, Development Director. Do you have any updates?
Or I'll keep this a little bit shorter. Um, there, there's, there's, um. I did, although I did have another slide that's going to get lost here. So just a few things that have been going on the last couple of weeks, again, that you don't really see related to some develop economic development. Um, this, the, you know, the Plymouth Village Water and Sewer is planning on a major um, construction project in, on Main Street downtown area, uh, especially South Main. In their design, you know, there was a lot of, um. We already kind of knew it, but I guess, but there was a real need to address stormwater drainage in South Main Street, really from, um, the trap. This, the common down towards Rite Aid, uh, and water flows downhill. So this really means extending from Russell Street kind of down to the river. Um, because water flows downhill. So it's going to bisect the road. Um, and because of the, the, um, the level of construction that's happening with water and sewer, it made sense to combine, uh, efforts to try to add in stormwater. So long story short, the town has applied for an Economic Development Administration, uh, grant, uh, and, um, Jules, uh, did a lot of work on that. Um, an engineering firm was, we had a planning grant from US Rural Development, I guess last fall, this was all before I was here. But to help get this kind of preliminarily designed, as they call it, to get the application in. So we got that done back in January. And then we had a request for about twelve more items that we, they needed more clarification information on. Um, so we, there was a big scramble last week to get all that in. Uh, so it's been a busy week, but it looks pretty favorable. I don't want to, um, you know, we, because we couldn't meet the deadline of last week was great and we solved a couple of big problems with it. So, um, this will be a two point seven million dollar grant for the town, if it's successful, for three point three seven million to- total project for just the stormwater. So, um, as I said, this stuff is expensive, especially when it's already in a built area with traffic control. But, um, you know. We'll stay tuned. Hopefully, we're, we hope to be able to have the final word, um, within a month or so is what they've told us. So we've been working on that. Um, in addition, I've been working on, um, we decided through the Board of Selectmen to go for a transportation alternative program through DOT, Department of Transportation. So that application's due the nineteenth, so in a couple of weeks. Um, so we were waiting to figure out about a couple of things, but we're going to go ahead with um, some, this, this really addresses alternative transportation. So pedestrian and bicycle primarily would be the areas for us. Um, so we're looking at, uh, some additional sidewalks in the Russell Street, Warren Street Crawford area. And also some additional repairs to some, um, really deteriorated sidewalks there. So Jules, um, oh, thank you. So why this is important, it's about thirty one hundred feet of sidewalk. Um, we need a letter of support for the application from the, a letter from the planning board. Um, Jules did this, I, I started to look at, uh, just the houses or the housing on Russell Street and it was estimated to be three hundred and eighty-five bedrooms. Um, so there's a lot of people, it's one of our highest density neighborhoods, there's obviously a lot of pedestrian traffic. I found in the master plan, some great statements about, um, that, you know, that these were, meets the goals of the master plans in several areas. One specific, specific goal said, seek funding for sidewalk and pedestrian in projects from New Hampshire DOT's TAP program. Now, there you go. So that's exactly what we're doing. Um, but we need a letter of support. The, um, applications due is the nineteenth. So I was, had talked to Rebecca and said, could this board tonight, uh, vote to? I did not draft the letter yet, but basically to, um, ask, you know, Rebecca to sign a letter from the board saying that you support this application and will make, highlight these points from the master plan. So I am asking you to consider that and then vote on that.
I'll make the motion that we, um, support, uh, a letter, uh, written by Rebecca on behalf of the planning board in support of the project.
Second.
Great. Um, I will read the rule. Um, Phil.
Yes.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Uh, Mike. You still have Mike?
Me.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Steve.
Yes.
And me, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, is that it for updates?
Yep.
Um, do you have something on the agenda for the eighteenth meeting, the meeting of the eighteenth?
Oh, um, I just a quick overview, we'll be continuing the Riverside Landing. Uh, we do have a, uh, site plan review. Fairly simple because of change of use Mount Prospect Academy. Um, we might have a preliminary review discussion from another, for another project. Uh, and I think that was it. I just kind of give you a little bit of a heads up on that.
Preview. Awesome. Okay. Next up, we have, um, some unfinished business. We have Father, Fatherland Family Trust subdivision application. Um. I think we've got, um, we have Steve Ferguson on the line and I think, um, Joe Carter, it looks like you are on the phone. Um, just to want to remind folks that we are not talking about the site plan review. We're talking about the subdivision. There was a question about the, um, what we approved as a board and what was submitted for us to sign and, um, get to the registered deeds. There's some discrepancies there, so we were going to talk about that. Um, and, uh, and just, um, I think after thinking about the meeting we had two weeks ago, recognizing that Mr. Carter is on the phone and, um, can't see us. That, um, just to distinguish between our voices, just if we can just say our names before we speak, so he knows whether he's talking, you know, Chair of the Planning Board or who's, who's speaking. I think that just might be a, a better thing to do so he can understand what's, what's going on. Uh, because he's not looking at our, you know, Brady Bunch faces on the screen. So. Okay, um, so from my understanding, um. And June, I do have, um, the plaits, the, that I can pull up as well, but in my review of what was submitted versus what was, um, what was given to us in Mylar, that we've got some acreage difference in the lot size. Um, the frontage, there's some discrepancy in the frontage from the submitted, the approved plat and, um, what was given to us to submit to the Grafton County Register of Deeds and the driveway easement is, there's a different width. So those are the three discrepancies that I can see. Um, would it be helpful for folks if I pulled up the, the plans on the screen or, um. I'm, I, heads moving around, yes, okay. I was just thinking bobbleheads without any definitive direction. Um, let me.
I guess Rebecca, I was only going to say, I, I have an updated summary chart, uh, table that I made.
Okay.
I updated it today. So should we start with that?
Okay.
So, um, because people, I did send out the plans, um, and I did talk to Steve Ferguson today, who's now here. Hi, Steve. Um, now I gotta, I was able to find. And I did share this with Steve. So after we talked about it, so this is, um, my summary of what, uh, I was seeing on the plan. So just to run through there, I sent you, I believe, two, four sheets. Um, because each plan has got two sheets, so it's two, two stages of this. So, um, the approved plat, I should have put a date on here. November eighteenth, um, two thousand twenty, the planning board approved a two lot subdivision for this, um, this site. So I tried to build this table for the acreage. Um, there was a note that said ten point six acres and also nine point four, if you exclude the land, um, that's not under the water, basically, as I interpret that. I want to bring you up to this bullet at the top, that a definition per our regulation says lot area is the horizontal area of the lot line between the lot lines, exclusive of any area in a street or freshwater. All right, so, um, I interpret that to mean that by our definition that the lot size of this is nine point four. Um, but the deed, I guess, reads to the center of the river. And that often happens, goes to the center line of a highway or center line of a river, say. Um, but we want to talk about lot area. And that's really what we are considering here. So the lot sizes are there, um, for that approved plan on the first line. The Mylar that came in, I believe it was in January, um. I had the date on the, my papers, papers all mixed up here. So, um, early January. So the, you know, the board approves it and there was a condition for the DOT driveway permit, which has been issued. So then, um, January seventh, we had delivered the Mylar, which is the plastic kind of sheets that, uh, we, the, the registry of deeds require plans to be on Mylar because it doesn't shrink or, or expand over time. So it's a more exact, um, type of material to uh, record these things on because you want to be accurate. Uh, so that Mylar, because I was new in particular, I was like, well, I don't know what the board approved back in November. So I pulled out the approved plan and the Mylar and I was like, wait a second. Now it just says, there was a note that has been removed. Um, so it just says ten point six. And the lot acreages are different for lot one and two. And furthermore, the frontage is different and the easement width is different. So pretty much all of these, uh, measurements, I thought, wow, this is odd. So we've had some correspondence back and forth. And then on, um, you do not have a copy of these because, again, you approve a plan, we get a Mylar to sign, we being asked and, you know, to sign this Mylar and get it to the registry. And I, my point to you is that Mylar is different. Um, through the discussions, I think there's been an effort to try to, um, update the plans, but without, um, great, it's taken a fair, quite a bit of my time to kind of, each time one of these has come in on the sixteenth and the eighteenth to kind of understand what changed. Normally there's sort of a record on a plan that would say, um, on this date, you know, adjusted a typographic era or, um, added a, you know, a, a note about soil types or something like that. You kind of make a little notation about what the changes were made. Um, so you can see those other plans, the acreages are the same as the Mylar, but on one there wasn't an easement, you know, now that it's there. And again, the, um, frontage has, is, um, fluctuated a bit, uh, you know, um, between the Mylar and the third plan. And then the fourth plan was adding in the, um, adding the easement back in, but that easement width is different than what you approved. So I did, um, take it, you know, took, looked a little bit at what the next steps are with this. And again, you've approved a plan, you've been given a Mylar to try, for the, this, this is the step that you, the, the full board doesn't see. But we get a Mylar, the chair signs it, goes off to the registry and that's the official record. But when you have a, a Mylar that's different than the approved plat, um, that's a problem. So in my discussion, Mr. Ferguson, today, you know, there was some talk about, well, those are minor changes. But I, um, would advise the board that a difference of one point two acres and, um, different, uh, lot sizes for lot one, you know, four point three versus five and five point oh four versus five point six. And then the frontage difference between the, the Mylar, all of those areas are diff, you know, the measurements, acreage, frontage and easement are all different than what you approved. So that's a change. So the process that we should have going forward is ask the applicant, applicant to come in with a new, whichever plat they want, a revision and an explanation about what the revision is. And then we'd have to collect more money for public hearing notices because it's a revision to the subdivision. We'd have to notify the butters and have another public hearing. And then you can decide if you want to, um, approve the amendments to the plat that you approved.
Um, I, I want to point out that I just realized that, I think I would say that I wouldn't want to sign something that we approved. If we did, this doesn't have the dimensions that we had approved, but I do want to point out that I believe I was not at that meeting. Um. Phil, I believe you were chairing that meeting. So, uh.
Well, somebody asked to approve it.
So, um.
I can address all this when you'd like.
Um, sure, if you have, if you have something to address these issues.
Uh, yes, the, uh, I mean, the main point, yeah, is, is really is the, uh, if the board feels that that's a substantial change from, uh, from this subdivision that was approved, it's not uncommon in my experience to have, uh, have these changes. Uh, but if, if you, you think that that's a, that's a major change, it's still two lots, still has required frontage, still has required lot area, uh, regardless of the number. We're not increasing twelve lots to fifteen or two lots to eight, it's a two lot subdivision. They get frontage and they have area. So if that's considered a, a substantial change, that hasn't been my experience. So if it is, then that's in my, that's my error to, uh, to this board. And I would apologize for that.
So just so I'm understanding that he, the driveway easement cuts across one lot to access the other lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I think my biggest issue would be the driveway easement. So say we've got a driveway easement that the recorded deed says sixty feet. Or the recorded subdivision plan, the plan we have on record says fifty feet, there's a discrepancy there. So if one of those parcels sells, we don't have a, um, an agreement between those two documents. So there could be.
You have the only signed one and that, that's signed and at the.
Hang on a sec. So to me, I just, having experience dealing with deeds and conservation easements, um, when things are unclear, it makes it difficult when we're talking about, um, talking about, you know, subsequent, potential subsequent owners. So, um.
Yes, that's why, uh, the recorded plan would be the, the final one. So there shouldn't be any question as to the, as to the others.
Ask a question about the frontage. There seems to be a discrepancy only on the Mylar. Where the Mylar shows not, uh, I believe it's nine hundred three and all of the other plans submitted show nine twenty-three. Are you comfortable recording, uh, a document, a legal document with your stamp on it that has a twenty foot discrepancy from everything else you've, you've filed?
Uh, what I would prefer to do is, uh, is to, is to have you, if you're, are you saying that, that this is enough of a discrepancy? That you would want, uh, a new plan or, I mean, I, I'd rather have everything nice and, nice and neat and all finished up.
I, I agree. If you're saying. For you, you're the one with a license that's, that, that can be revoked for, you know, inaccuracies. I'm not. So my question to you is, are you comfortable with recording that deed?
I would like.
As it is.
No, I would like to change that. I would, uh, change my scribner error on that. And in fact, the, uh, from what I know now of the, uh, the, the boundary, the, the perimeter has changed, but not significant enough. That if you think the lots have changed significantly, significantly enough from the approved plan to the last one we sent. I mean, I, so are you? I guess that's where my, more my question is. No, I've got a, the latest boundary has the correction in the frontage and a correction in the back where there was a, a pipe found. So I, I guess my question is the, uh, what is a significant change? Or what does it change enough that you would, and I, and I know June's, June's, uh, perspective on that, talking to her today. And, uh, I just didn't have that view and I hadn't seen that in the past. So that's why I was just trying to figure that out.
Steve Whitman.
I guess, um, after hearing this last time and then again today with, uh, because there are several things that need to be corrected. I guess I would be comfortable with a motion to have the applicant come back in with one plan that has all of it fixed. Everyone, unfortunately, everyone does have to get notified, but, um, hopefully we can clean it up pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Uh, I could, uh, you know, we could, we could put the, uh, the lot back to what, what you approved and then a correction to the exterior boundary. And I wouldn't see that that would be necessary. And I wouldn't see that that would be necessary to have a a new hearing. Because really, that would just be a a correction in the Scribner's error and that boundary error that I found in the back corner. So the lots would have the area that you that you would, that you had approved. We'll have a fifty foot. Because I I've gathered there's enough of a change is what you're seeing, so. Yeah.
June, go ahead. Yeah. So with all due respect, I mean, the the total frontage on the approved plan from November was seven hundred twenty-three point twelve. And on the Mylar is seven oh three point one. So it's not just about the acreage, you know, you're seeing total frontage changed, not just, and then, you know, the frontage for both lots, one and two is also different.
Correct.
Two plans. So I don't see how that much frontage can change without some further explanation. And again, my recommendation based on some review of things, some things today is to ask the applicant to, you know, if you want to go with the Mylar to.
I don't want to go with that.
To to bring a new Mylar and then that represents an accurate statement of what that lot is and how it will be divided. And then the board can have another public hearing and notice the public and more discussion about it. So.
So, okay, so just to be clear, June, your recommendation is that we ask the applicant to come in with an amended amended subdivision plan that we can then approve. And it will have to be noticed and go through the the regular procedure, but an amended subdivision.
I would like.
That's the legal process that I've been advised to follow, so.
Hi.
Um, other other board members, Steve?
I was just gonna make that motion.
Okay, oh. Fantastic.
Oh, eloquently stated, but have the applicant come back in for one more meeting with the with the notification with the with the measurements of the Mylar of their choosing for us to review and hopefully approve.
I'd like to withdraw the Mylar and the and the further changes to the plan with with the misunderstanding that that wasn't a significant change, so that the plan that you approved is the plan I can bring back with the with the Scribner's error fixed, which is just an exterior boundary, which I don't see would be significant at at all. So the lot sizes would be the same as as you, as you, as you would done.
I'm kind of wondering, is the category out of the bag? We know that there's a difference. We can't, with this knowledge. And hang on, hang on a second, Mr. Ferguson, please.
I'm sorry.
Um, is the is the cat out of the bag? And do we need to move forward because we now know that there are some errors in the plan that we approved? And, you know, we can't, we can't turn back the clock here. I don't know. June?
Again, if I think if you have a new plan, whatever they want to do, and, you know, Steve Ferguson is a licensed land surveyor, surveyor, and if as long as he, what he brings in has his stamp on it, then Phil's rate is a good point, you know, that's his professional expertise on that. So I would suggest that we see a revised plan with a stamp or a a plan that is ready, ready, ready to go to the registry, because we have been told that the, there's errors to what was, for whatever reasons, there was errors to what was approved on the nineteenth of November. So you need to see a plan that corrects those errors with a stamp and then it should be done, so.
So let me clarify that if I had a plan with a Scribner's error, that would have to go back for planning to send out to the public again to have them read to go for a pu, a public meeting on that. I guess what what determines that and what doesn't? That that's that's our biggest, biggest thing. So the cat out of the bag. No, I can go back to that subdivision that you approved. I hadn't seen the notice of decision on that. And what I had done to change that, to make that different had been my experience in the past. So not not to belate at that point, I can go back to removing those plans that submitted and go with the approved plan and with a corrected boundary. That's all. And then that's what I'm saying is so you would almost forget that the changes, because there are no changes, other than the perimeter boundary that has a that had a Scribner's error in it, because the plan that you've got now is got seven twenty-three. Not the stamp Mylar, but the one you approved is seven twenty-three eleven. And that's what I have now.
Can you clarify what your Scribner's error is for us, please?
Yeah, there was twenty, there was twenty feet and a the sixty-nine on one sixty-nine instead of one eighty-nine on lot two in the front. And I don't believe oh, I just, I just managed something down.
June, do you have a plan you can show us? Or is there, is there an image that can show us the the difference in the area we're talking about? Do I have to rescind my motion?
I think maybe. Because we do, we do have a motion on the table right now.
I can, I feel like we're going in circles here.
I I agree. So I I know. Yeah. So I think we need to either go with Steve's motion and get an amended subdivision plan that can then have a Mylar that matches it. Or, and please someone correct me, board member, correct me if I'm wrong. If we get a Mylar that matches the plan that we approved, we can file that.
That would be my understanding as well.
Yeah. I have a question when you, when I'm, when I'm able to speak, I I don't know where I stand, so.
Go, go ahead.
I can give you, now, I can't give you a Mylar that shows. I can't give you a recordable plan for the one that you approved, because there's a Scribner error on it. And I added a highway bound that didn't make it on this plan, which is just in the front. So that's where the math, that's where the math that screwed up. So the lot, the lots itself, lot one and lot two, and the and the total frontage from the plan that you approved is is the same. The location of the frontage on lot one and two is the same as you approved. It's the written number has changed. But that so I guess I'm saying that is that a significant change to to have to go through a new application and notify? Or can I get you that plan that's the approved plan with a corrected boundary, and then you can determine from that, that's a change, that's a significant change, or it isn't? It's just it you'd be overlaying them, you'd see the exact same thing, you would just have one eighty-nine instead of one sixty-nine from that, which is where I then backed the math down. So you could overlay them and they'd be the same. Yep.
We still have the issue of the acreage and the easement on the driveway. So those are different.
No, it's not different. It's just what you approved. Those lots will be just as you approved. So get rid of the Mylar and the plans after that. That was my era, not going with what you approved. Because I.
I've reached a point of confusion and.
I can give you the plan that you approved without my embellishments, thinking that it wasn't a major change. So I can give you the plan you approved with a corrected boundary, which will be the same. Graphically, it just says it, it has a couple distances different. The areas will be the same that you approved. I'm going back to that show is gonna, it's gonna show the easement and the easement at fifty feet width, where the road is exactly where it is. I think that would, if I gave you that plan and you compared it against what you approved, you could then see exactly what that is. And and that I don't think is a, it would be a major deal to then have to be, it's not a completely new subdivision. So that would take, I'm hoping that would take the confusion out of, okay, the rest of it. So that you can look at a plan that I should have given you with a Mylar that looked at it with my corrections of my Scribner's errors.
It seems like if he's going to provide us with a Mylar that matches what was approved, with the exception of one distance error and a pin missing along the highway, I would think that we would have a hard time not authorizing that. It as as if if it were up to me to sign that, I would not feel uncomfortable signing that and recording that. It's what the planning board approved.
And I'm willing to do that if you, if you think it's bigger, then you could go ahead with that.
Well, what, so what I don't want to have happen is have to have, I mean, June's put a lot of time into this, too. You're dealing with a lot of staff time and the comparison to make sure everything is lined out exactly. So and that we're just going to be doing this again in a month's time, because, you know, it's not quite lined out. Other thoughts from board members? June, any thoughts? Oh, sorry, Carl, you just unmuted. Go ahead if you had something to.
No, I I'm just thinking that if we're going to approve something, everything ought to match. Saying something's close isn't matching. It's, it's close, and it's I I would have a tough time voting for that. I'd like to be able to give you that the corrected, give you a Mylar that represents, or give you a plan that represents what you approved. And then you can tell me if that's a significant change.
I mean, I think.
As Phil was saying, that way you could just look at that without all the extras and go, yep, no. We'll go with that.
Steve?
If we go that route, that's going to delay it another month. So I mean, we've been talking about this now for a couple of months. I'm happy to rescind my motion if people want to go that route. But it does seem like we could end up right back where we are again.
I'm inclined to agree with you, Steve. I think I almost think just because of the layers of confusion that we're dealing with here, that I would rather see an amended subdivision. So we can just start with something that we know is is right, instead of having to do this back and forth. So. Yeah. Other thoughts? Or I think your motion is still on the table, Steve. Did you, is there a second to Steve's motion?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this about asking the applicant to provide a, an amended subdivision plan? Okay, I will read the roll then. Phil?
Hey.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Carl?
Hey.
Mike?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And I'm an I. And I didn't count, so. Not, I'm not used to these split votes. Did the motion pass? It did. Okay. All right. So to the applicant, we'd like an amended subdivision plan, please.
So I haven't so if I understand that correct, I have an approved, I have an approval?
No, we're asking for an amended site plan or subdivision plan.
But I have an existing approval. So I guess I'm we'll have to think about that.
We need to approve, we'd need to approve your amended subdivision plan. Steve?
Yeah. So due to the number of errors and the way that we keep going around in circles, we've asked that you come in with a new subdivision. You pick the numbers, you show us the plan. We'll go through that process and hopefully it'll be relatively straightforward.
And and you you want that, so that creates it as a just so I'm clear. That's a new application? New submission?
I think that, June, go ahead.
It would be an amendment to the application that you was filed back in, I think it was October. Amendment to the plan. So it's not a new application. The, there's not a new application fee, but we will have to collect the public notice fees, and I don't remember what that is. I don't have the application right in front of me. We can get, figure that out and let you know.
And it's is it subject to any of the proposed zoning changes?
There are no, there are no proposed zoning changes.
So I'm, and if there were, I'm still an active application. That's what we're trying to, didn't want to get backed into that. If that makes any sense to, to anyone, yeah.
I I understand your concern. If you're, you you are concerned that the new zoning might apply to this, and we have not proposed any zoning changes for the voters this year, so there are no changes to the conditions under which you're proposing the subdivision.
Okay. I have another question, just so I understand, and then I'll leave you alone. The notifying of the butters again. I don't understand why that's necessary.
That's the law. So because it's an amended, because you're making amendments to the original subdivision.
That's fine. I I just didn't know what.
Legally required to do that.
Yeah.
If I can, thi- this is even more convoluted, because everybody who's in a butter to that property will already be noticed of the site plan review that's happening for that abutting parcel at the same hearing. So technically, but this is a new topic, which means people, abutters may have an interest in this that they would not have known about otherwise, if if they said, yeah, we're okay with the site plan, but if they had concerns about the subdivision that they were unable to express because they weren't notified of it, it would, it would not be favorable for us. So I I think that even though all of the abutters are, know that there is a hearing for the site plan for the property, I still think that in my opinion, I would still require notification of the butters for a subdivision.
It's also a continuation, so
Right.
from, for this property. So there wasn't new notice that went out for this.
No, but I mean, once, once a hearing is is notified and continued, the the, all of the butters have have the right to know that. If they were there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We have one more thing on the agenda. I'm sorry, I have to take a quick break. But but we would just, we need to talk about zoning a little bit. So I don't know if if Phil, if you can just sort of, you know, the idea was we were gonna, I was gonna bring up the the letter that went out to all the Ag Zone people, just so the entire board knows that that is something that popped up. And then I'd like to talk about what are next steps for zoning, but I I do have to step away for just a moment, so.
Go ahead. I I can introduce what I know about this letter that went out, if you give me just a minute. I I have not received a copy of the letter, but from my understanding, all of the residents of the agricultural zone received a mailing. Oh, boy. Sorry. I'm not sure where it, I I don't know that I have a record of it, but a mailing from Mr. French, who's a surveyor, was from his offices in Rumney, but it's basically a a petition to the town to express concerns about changes to the zoning ordinance affecting the Ag Zone and an opportunity for people to contact. I'm not sure if it's intended to, I I believe it goes back to the gentleman who sent it out, but I'm not sure. But my understanding is that there's, you know, an organ, an organized effort to provide feedback. Oh, thank you, Steve. Steve just sent me a copy. That's what it was. So if I can summarize, there one, two, three, four, five, six items. It's a petition to save the Plymouth Agricultural Zone. The introduction says, we, the residents of the agricultural zone in Plymouth are voicing our concerns with the planning board's effort changes to the zone. We would like to articulate the following items. So there are, there are six items that are identified as common themes that were expressed during our hearing with a name, a signature, an opportunity for the, for the recipient to fill in their name, signature, property address, number of acres, phone number, and email address. And a statement at the bottom that says, we realize circumstances could arise in the future. And a statement at the bottom that says, we realize circumstances could arise in the future that necessitate a change and the Ag Zone Committee continues its longstanding offer to work with current and future boards to find solutions that balance both the needs of the Ag Zone owners, Ag Zone owners and the town. So Rebecca, are you back? Do you want to say anything about this?
I just wanted to make clear that there are no proposed zoning changes that are going before the town right now. That said, we are always thinking about zoning and how it fits the current town and how we foresee us going in the future. So this is an ongoing conversation. We talk about this this time of year. Because in order for us to, I mean, we were talking about the zoning changes that we were working on this, this time last year to get them ready for town meeting, which hasn't, for my town meeting 2021. So we are always working on zoning changes for us to get changes through through the board, through outside other non-board participation to the public hearing and then to town meeting. It takes pretty much an entire year, which is why we're talking about this now. So but there will be nothing on the warrant this year. There's nothing, nobody will be voting on zoning changes in the in the election next week. I don't think there's a write-in zoning option. So yeah, so I just want to make sure that is, that is clear.
I would like
Oh, go ahead, Phil.
That's fine. I would like to make a point that I don't believe that the town recognizes any form of agricultural commission. And I think that as a board, we should be willing to accept any input that any individuals in the town are willing to provide to us as we go through this zoning process.
Yeah. I agree. And I think that one of the, the, all along, we've been trying to get participation from from other folks beyond this board. And I am thankful that we, we have it now. So so I think if we are to propose any changes, and there's, there's a number of different kinds of changes we can do for our zoning, some of them are very administrative, like things that conflict, things that don't work. Sometimes there are state statutes that come down and we have to adjust our, our, our zoning ordinance so we remain legal with the state. But then there's more sort of content type changes that are looking at, you know, lot size, things that are, you know, things that are more, what's happening in each zone and a little less administrative. So for us to think about zoning changes 2022, we need to kind of come up with a work plan, knowing that we have at this point, you know, eight work sessions to get our zoning ordinances ready to go for a public hearing, which would be probably the first two meetings in January. So we need to think about how we're going to engage with folks. Do we want to have a subcommittee? What's the work plan going to look like? And so this is just something we need to figure out as a board. So any
I would propose that we have all of our zoning work in work sessions as opposed to in subcommittee.
Okay. Steve?
I would agree with Phil. I think if we could start to let, we had a lot of participation at hearings. So if we could start to let people know that our first monthly meeting, our work session, we're going to dedicate a certain amount of time, knowing that there are other things the board also has to do. Maybe do it right at the beginning of the meeting so that people can tune in. They don't have to wait.
Yeah.
If we do get to a point where we identify that there's enough work that needs to be done, either on the administrative stuff or on the district stuff. And subcommittee work does become necessary. I think we'll have a bigger group of people that might volunteer. And then we'd have to report back to this board anyway. This board is going to be where the action is, where there's transparency.
Yeah. Grace, I saw you had your hand up. Did you want to add something?
Only if it's appropriate at this time.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we got a copy of this letter too, but there was a survey attached to it, which seemed that this particular group has a particular set of principles around what they think should be solid in the ag zone. Which doesn't feel like it gives a lot of room for conversation. So I guess I was a little concerned about the letter, given it's
Okay.
From something called the Plymouth Ag Zone Committee.
I'm going to just pause you right there for a second, Grace, because I don't, I, you know, I don't want to open this up to a, a discussion about the letter in particular, but I think, you know, I'm gonna, please nod if this is, this is kind of what you're thinking is, how do we make sure we get a diversity of voices at the table? Yeah, okay. So so I think outreach has always been a challenge for us. How do we make sure we're reaching those folks, everybody that could potentially be interested? So obviously, it's possible to send a letter out to everybody in the ag zone, but it's not something that, that that we're, we can necessarily do as a, as a board either. So I don't know. So I think this is the question we've been throwing around for two years. Like, how, how do we, how do we get the right voices at the table? Because we're not, you know, we don't necessarily know that our changes are focused in the ag zone either, because we're kind of starting fresh a little bit. So how do we get the right people to the table is my question. Steve?
I think by starting to tell everybody, I think the word will spread if we're now a month out from that first session. And if people don't want to participate in the work sessions, if, if anything results from this over the course of the eight months, will be draft material we can print out and hand to people, have them pick it up at town hall. Get it out through people's various networks. So I think we can get creative to make people know what's going on and provide feedback. And if at the end of the day, we can find something that people are comfortable with and we want to take it forward to town meeting, great. And if we can't, and we don't take anything forward to town meeting, at least we've continued to work on it and think about the future.
Yes.
Do you think we have a diversity of interest? It doesn't have to be huge numbers, but.
Yep. Okay. So as far as what we need to do and when, and you know, I know where we've got a new staff member who we're hoping will help lead us through this process in a way that is not just reserved to the work that we can do in our work sessions and then the occasional subcommittee. So so we need to make sure we're managing, you know, our work within the workload, the general workload of, of the board as well. So what would our suggested, June, go ahead.
Yes, just to try to help move this along. I mean, I certainly hear and understand and know, you know, when, starting in this job, that zoning amendments were important for the community and the planning board. So it's on, you know, my, my kind of pile of to-do things to keep working on it. I also do think that some improvements to the zoning ordinance also falls under economic development. I really believe that. And then much, I do think there's a lot of administrative things that have to change. So we're not going to be talking just about the agricultural zone. There's a lot in the zoning ordinance that from this, from where, from the, the way we work with it every day, it's just like, what does this mean? You know, it's never perfect, but there's things that you guys don't always see. So those are some of the more, to me, and almost more important things to work on. And then also dig a little bit deeper into the uses and also update some areas and all the zones. So how far we can get with this, you know, it's going to be, bear with me as we go through more PowerPoints or something. I don't know what format we'll do, but I do understand that work sessions need to be dedicating some severe, some serious time to this. So we'll do our best to get it prepared and carry on. So.
Okay. So as far as what we'll talk about next month, we will kick off the zoning adventure 2022. Next work session. So that's April. And I think knowing some of those administrative changes is, because I know we, we talk or toss around a lot of those. You know, we're like, oh, that needs to get changed, but putting that all in a meaningful place. So we know kind of what's that administrative hit list of stuff that needs to get done. And then what more can we accomplish? You know, you know, I want to bring people to the table. I also worry we're going to bore them to death with some of the, the minor the minor administrative changes. I find it exciting, but not everyone finds, you know, that kind of stuff exciting. Steve?
I wonder with some of the minor administrative changes, I mean, June's been good about getting us material to look at beforehand. So we, if we review and flag questions we have, she doesn't have to run through every element of it. The board can raise questions, concerns. We could try that.
Yep. Yeah, I guess what I think, I feel like I'm just sort of babbling in a circle now is what I'm not sure. We've got our administrative changes. We tried to push through some, you know, fairly substantial changes this year. What are our priorities? And I'm not even sure we're clear 100% on what our priorities are, what's the, the most important thing we need to do? And how do we establish our zoning? Because there's a lot of stuff to do. It is, it is kind of a funky zoning ordinance. What, what are the top three things that we want to do? So
Should we maybe come to our next meeting with a list of the top three things you want to do and discuss them?
I mean, my top three is like, let's start from scratch, but I don't think it's going to happen. Yeah, I mean, is that, is that something that would be helpful for June?
I would suggest, thank you, John. I think that's a great idea. If anybody has things, but I wouldn't, you know, if you have one or if you've got 10, that's fine. Doesn't have to be just three. Send me an email if you've got anything that's on your mind. I will also try to, maybe I can get it done tomorrow. Find, there's, you know, there's some towns out there that have good zoning ordinance in terms of sort of the structure, their organization and their administrative part. So I will send you some links to a couple other towns. Their zone, everything's now online, which is wonderful. And, and kind of give you some direction about why I like those ordinances, not so much because in their single family zone, they allow, you know, the setbacks are 10 feet instead of 15. It's not at that level. It's more looking at it structurally. An organization to just get a better sense of how many more definitions they have, how much better their definitions, you know, provide clarity. And then as they go through each zone, what they do, what, how they give definition to the difference between a non-conforming use, a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming lot. And this is something that came up two days ago, a non-conforming lot. And how do you do a boundary line adjustment? Anyway, long story. So there's just a lot of missing pieces in our zoning ordinance. So I will try to direct you, but I, you know, looking at other towns is always a good kind of research to do too. So
Especially for your new folks who are just getting into the, our existing zoning, you can look at more zoning ordinances too. All right. So, so let's do a little research and see what other towns are doing. Send some priorities to June and, and then can we leave it at, oh, the beginning of each work session now, we're going to talk, you know, about our zoning ordinance and work towards our changes. Does that work for everyone?
Would it also just be useful for all of us to revisit the master plan before then and pick out things in the master plan that we really think are key to moving forward?
I think it's important for us to revisit the master plan like quarterly, because I feel like I read through it and it's a, it's a dense document. So I would say, yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea. So you can blame John for all the homework this time. But Steve?
I think John's suggestion is right on too, because I think some of the criticism we received in January that we should address is, you know, why are we doing this? And so if we're starting from scratch, we can look to the master plan and identify things and decide if they're worth working on or if people feel that although they were citing the master plan, they're fine. So I like that suggestion.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to summarize and then maybe shut this down before we have more to do. So we will, so review the master plan. And this is for our next work session. So early April and oh my gosh, June's going to send out a couple example zoning ordinances and what she likes about them. And I, I'm right there with you, June. I, you know, I look at other town zoning ordinances and I'm shocked at how easy it is to find some things in other towns that I can't find in our own. So and then, and if there's anything that strikes you in our own zoning ordinance that, that seems contradictory, it doesn't make sense. Starting to make a list, a running list of these things that need to, need to change. So any other zoning related things? Those of you, all of us who have, please reach out to your connections throughout town and in the ag zone. This is a conversation for everybody throughout town. And really the participation we have in the, while we're, you know, really making the sausage is important. So yeah. Anything else from folks?
Would you like a motion?
Not yet. I have one more thing to add. And then I mean, because I realized that it's after 8:30, but the planning and zoning conference is coming up, I think mid-May. And June sent out a, I think a registration link to that. I've never been, I'm sure some of you have been. I think it, I've heard it's great. June's holding up a flyer now. I believe the town will send planning board members to that. What's that?
It's all remote, isn't it? It's all, yeah, it's all remote.
Yeah, this year it's all remote and free. So there's no excuse not
So the town is definitely sending us this year. But I think in the past, they've had sessions for new planning board members too. So it's a great way to not just rub elbows with other planners, but you know, but to also just get a good grasp on, on the stuff we're working on. So and if do people do, do go, I'd like to maybe take a little bit of time in our June work session, just if you've attended a workshop, just to share a few things that you've learned that other folks weren't able to attend, can, can learn from what you've learned. So all right.
Most to adjourn.
Second.
And thank you to our new planning board members for sticking it out. This is one of the longer work sessions we've had. So don't, don't be scared. And we're glad you're here. So I think I didn't speak for my first six meetings that I sat through. So we're really glad you're here and looking forward to working with you coming up. So with that, I've lost my role. So I'll just read. So the motion on the table is to adjourn. Mike?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Phil?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
An I for me.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.